Central Berkshire Regional School District will now come to order at 7 o'clock. Just for your information, the meeting is being audio and videotaped. And if anybody in the audience is taping, would you please let us know? Okay, thank you. All who are able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of America, to the Constitution of the United States of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And have some of you take boldness. Mr. Armus is not here. Mr. Casio?
Here.
Mr. Chamaso?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Farley is not here, and he's not on the phone. Mr. Hagmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Kinkley is not here. Mr. Locketell?
Here.
Mrs. Ladisori?
Here.
Mr. Les is not here. Is Mr. Peters on the phone?
Yes.
Here.
Hi, Mr. Peters. Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Dr. Crackries?
Here.
We have an open seat in Washington. Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
And Ms. Pro?
Here.
And we have a warm... Thank you. So I certify that this is the agenda, and at this time, we'll have responses from the audience. And just because this is all new to me, I'm just going to give you a reminder that we welcome your input, and we've allocated 30 minutes for this portion of the meeting. If you wish to speak, please be recognized by the chair, and in consideration of others, please keep your comments brief. Don't read any comments from people who have... don't read comments written by others, and keep in mind that your statements will be made public. Do we have anybody from the audience who would like to speak? Yes?
Hello. I promised to only use about two of those 30 minutes.
Thank you.
My name is John Bissel. I'm president of Graylock Federal Credit Union, and I wrote my thoughts down here so that could be succinct, which is sometimes a challenge for me. I'm a Dalton native, and I'm a proud graduate of Wacona. That was a long time ago, but I still carry that proudly. I care deeply about the school system and this community, as you all do. And I'm here tonight simply to say thank you for the strong leadership of Superintendent Lori Kazna and this school committee in supporting her work. Several months ago, she and I connected around our shared concern about the racial tensions and the incidents that were experienced here in the central Berkshire community. In talking to Lori, just in that first hour, I learned that she's exceptionally bright and committed, and has a powerful moral compass. Those are things that you already know, and I was privileged to learn that when I was dealing with her. When she asked me to join the Community Steering Committee to guide the district's equity and inclusion work, I readily agreed to that. With her leadership in the facilitation of multicultural bridge and the gathering of many, many dedicated educators and community leaders, including people in this room, the work has really started to take shape. And as tensions between students have spiked, we understand that just how important this work really is. We understand that it's both critically important and exceptionally difficult. And we're seeking to change the culture of a community at its most sensitive intersection, right here in our schools, the very places where our community values take root in our children, and where students begin to reflect on the degree to which the messages they receive at home prepare them to be global citizens. Lori Kazna understands the sacred nature of this work, and I commend the school committee for enabling and supporting her, empowering her to take it on. And I'm really here tonight simply to say thank you to her for her steady leadership in these challenging times, and to make sure that you on the committee all know that I stand with you, and all of my colleagues at Graylock also stand in solidarity with you as this very capable superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We totally agree. Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing them, we'll move to student affairs.
All right. So, as you all know, it's had a pretty busy past two weeks. So I'm just gonna go over like a really short list of more recent items so that I can spend more time on what happened two weeks ago. So on March 3rd, the cheerleaders won the state championships, which made them undefeated this season, so we're really happy for them, very proud of all the hard work they've accomplished. Tonight is the Wacona Band and Chorus Spring Concert, and so I'm sure that's going well. It started at 7:00. And so, should I just talk about...
Sure. So Hannah has two pretty complicated involved topics, and both of them I asked her to participate in. So she has a lot to say, but she's trying to remember a lot, so I might ask her a couple of questions if she doesn't highlight anything. So the Rural School Day on the Hill I had talked to you about, which really was to bring students together from rural school districts down in Boston at the State House. Thanks to Hannah, who was right away on board, and Jared Shannon, who is always on board, one of our teachers, who organized a group of students to go down, we had a presence at Rural Day on the Hill, which is to support and to advocate for more rural school aid that we were a very generous... we received a very generous amount from. So Hannah's gonna talk a little bit about what it was like down at Rural Day on the Hill.
Okay. So I went with two other seniors, went with Mr. Shannon. And once we were there, at first, since we had extra time, we kind of walked around the State House just to see, like, I don't know, get a better picture of what we were going to be doing for the day, I guess. And so, once the event started, we listened to like somebody... I forget who exactly.
I think it was Michael Bonacanzi, the superintendent in Wacona.
Right. So we listened to him, so we learned more about why we were there and what we were receiving. And then we watched the videos that pretty much said the same thing. And so after the introduction, pretty much, we broke off into groups. And so we got to meet with our representative, Paul Mark. And so once we met with him, he gave us a tour of the State House and told us a bunch of great things. Yeah.
Anything specific come up in the conversation with Mr. Mark?
Um...
What did he... What did he... What did he tell you about? Did he show you his office?
Yeah, we got to go to his office.
Oh.
That was cool.
Nice. So and then did you meet Senator Heinz?
I think, yeah, we did.
Right. How many kids were there about?
Um, I don't remember exactly.
Like more than 30, you think?
About 30.
About 30? So, and from all over?
Yes.
Awesome. Excellent. Thank you. And then that same day, Hannah had like a super long day because we'd start at like 6:00 AM, maybe earlier, I don't wanna know. I already shouted for a day at the high school, I know that is an early start. And then that night, you went out to Taconic at the invitation of Warren Dues, who is... where is Warren Taylor at the Eagle?
I always forget.
It's Consumer Marketing Director at the Eagle. He got a group of students together. He asked for students from our high school and several others. And once again, Hannah volunteered and was onstage at Taconic. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Okay. So I went with two other seniors from Wacona. We all went, and we met up with different high schoolers from across the county. Basically, how it was set up, there were about four tables, and we were grouped at different tables with people from different high schools. So I sat with someone from KHS and from Graylock. And so, basically, we had a proctor who asked us questions about a range of topics, including stress, stress, politics, usage of social media, and pretty much think that adults might not understand about teenagers and what we're going through and what... how we see the world, pretty much. And so, we took turns answering questions and learning from one another. And towards the end of the program, adults who were in the audience got to write down their questions on sheets of paper, and they were brought up to the stage so you could answer questions that may not have been covered. So, that was pretty cool.
How did students feel of level of stress?
They definitely felt stressed. That was pretty much the consensus when, um, I forget the question. The guy who's asking the questions.
I think it was another person from the Eagle.
It was.
Yep.
It was Kevin Moran.
Thank you. Kevin Moran. Oh, this is a team, I told Hannah.
So when he was asking us questions, he was like, "How many of you are stressed?" And pretty much all the high schoolers were like, "We are." And we took turns pretty much explaining why we stressed. For me, I know it's just, I wanna put my best into everything, so it's more of a, "I wanna do the best that I possibly can" type of stress, which I don't think is completely negative. So it was interesting hearing the thoughts of other high schoolers across the county.
Thank you very much. Our two other students who participated are representatives to the Equity and Diversity Steering Committee, which is focused on issues around equity and diversity. There was some conversation about race and those kinds of questions as well that came up?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. No, you... I think you covered everything I can think of to ask for kind of questions, mostly all with your own recollection. So that was where Hannah was at the last school committee meeting.
Any questions for Hannah? Okay. Well, thank you very much. You really did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Secretaries' report. Are there any corrections to the February 28th, 2019 minutes? If not...
Move to approved minutes of the regular meeting on February 28th as printed.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And extensions? The motion is carried. Thank you. Financial reports. Will the member please make a motion to approve the warrants?
Move to approve warrant number 182019-17 dated March 15th, 2019. Accounts payable in the amount of $294,330.21.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve warrant... Warrant AP 2019-17. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And extensions? Motion's carried.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-18 dated March 7th, 2019. Regular in the amount of $580,000.
So we have a motion and a second to approve warrant PR 2019-18. Any discussion? Seeing them. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Move to approve warrant number PR 2019-18D dated March 7th, 2019. Accounts payable in the amount of $106,433.95.
We have a motion and a second for warrant number PR 2019-18D. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Report of the Chair. So as Superintendent Kazna indicated, we have a vacancy in the town of Washington. And that's all I have to say at this point. Do you have to come up or not?
Not on this topic.
Okay. So subcommittee reports. Curriculum.
No, excuse me. I've got a... There's a Covington update that is in the modified agenda. And we went for about 10 months without taking or saying or meeting with Covington. And Friday, there was a blitz with the letter to the editor in the Eagle and the Saturday Eagle article. And then Friday evening, we got a letter from the Select Board of Covington. And the way that they were objecting to the voting, and I think members of the school committee got a copy of that letter, but I'm not entirely sure.
Yes.
The Chair is consulted with our attorney and will be responding very shortly to that letter. Then we got a letter from Covington's Education Committee, where they discussed possible solutions to withdrawing from the district. And they proposed two things to think about. One would be a possibility of a short-term solution, which would be a tuition agreement with various school districts in the area. And the second one, that would be a mediation process to deal with the uncertainty or the disagreement with the OPEB amount. And once that is clarified or agreed to, then we would deal with the regular transition agreement. And it was their feeling in this correspondence that that would not be too difficult to task. So that's where it stands. We should be getting a formal letter out to the Select Board very shortly, and we've already responded to the Education Committee that we'd be very amenable to meeting with them to deal with some of these issues. And no action by the school committee is expected at this time.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
I have to... Do you want to talk to the other coaches, or...
No.
No.
First of all, to get out of the... to withdraw, probably the biggest item is OPEB.
Right.
Which is a lot of individual decisions to be made. But after that, we have to deal with a transition agreement of which OPEB is really a part. And that's a little bit closer to routine than OPEB is. So one would think it would be more straightforward, but we really haven't reached agreement on that yet. That's a complex document, dealing with a lot of...
I kind of got the impression from the Covington letter that they were saying that the only thing they wanted is OPEB. Maybe I misunderstood when I read that.
I think they may have said that, but that's not...
Okay.
Not entirely. That's not in... not the whole story.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you. We'll move to subcommittee reports and recommendations. Curriculum.
Good evening. Curriculum, subcommittee met at 6:00 PM, right before the regular school committee meeting. We discussed two topics and then touched base on another. The first topic we discussed was the new social studies standards that were adopted last fall. We found out tonight that the new social studies standards haven't been updated since 2003, so it's been quite some time and long overdue. Where the old standards were basically just a list of dates and important facts that they wanted you to remember and regurgitate. The new standards make really integrate the process and make you ask questions and delve into inquiries regarding the different subjects on your social studies to help you investigate the issues and connect what's happening today to history, to make history come alive. And the whole point of doing this is to make... help the... our kids become more informed civic... or make more informed civic and political decisions, and be more responsible citizens of the country, so focusing and focusing on the history of the state, the US, and the world. And basically, so they've started integrating the new standards by buying new textbooks for the eighth grade and piloting new for the sixth and the seventh, and trying to delve more into inquiry-based curriculum and class... and what's gonna happen in the classroom. So we will see how that works. But all the teachers seem to be very excited about this because they feel that it's going to make kids actually understand history and realize what happened in the past informs today, rather than just, "This is what happened in 1855, and then forget about it after that." And then we went on and talked about... Leslie Blake Davis talked about instructional rounding, which is much like medical rounds for anybody who doesn't really understand, where they are going to... and it ties into the coaching that we're already doing, but coaching is more teacher-specific, whereas rounding is more looking overall to try to make improvements to the whole school. So groups of... wrap of observers for the rounds, going into several classrooms to observe how the students are interacting with the teacher and how they're engaging with the lessons to... and then they will report back to those teachers and give them real feedback with, you know, concrete examples and specific ideas of what happened and then they observed. And then those teachers that were observed will eventually become the rounders. And all of this is to try to strengthen the curriculum of and how engaged the students are in Wacona to... in hopes to help lift our performances. We also then went on to the NESCIS mid-year update on mid-year benchmark testing. They've... the review and the testing and review that we completed, Leslie and the others who have been reviewing, have definitely at the NESCIS seen gains in the LA, gains in science. And then still in math, they're making strides with the new math program, while the seventh and eighth graders still seem to be struggling with shifting to the new higher-level problem-solving skills. So they'll be looking into trying to figure out how to maybe get them into the new mindset for that level. We have our next meeting on April 11th at 6:00 PM at Beckett-Washington.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I'll be very thorough. Okay. Next is finance.
Okay. So we have not met since February 26th. We do not have a meeting scheduled. In your packet are the... yes? I'm sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. In your packet is the fiscal year 20 budget, final budget, which I hope you've had a chance to review. I don't know if there are any questions on that, except for before we proceed with the motions.
Any questions for Bonnie? Okay, you can proceed.
Okay. Final fiscal year 2020 gross salaries.
I'm sorry, Bonnie, can I interrupt you for a second?
Bonnie?
Whereas...
Bonnie?
One second.
Bonnie?
Hold on one second.
Bonnie, we're gonna go over the budget quick just to make sure that we go over it 'cause there's a few updates.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And now... No, yeah, and now... 'cause it's hard, 'cause you can't see us. As soon as we are done, I'll say, "We're done at this point." I'll make sure to do clear. There is not... So I'll make sure to do that for you, Bonnie. So there are no substantive changes to this budget, so you're gonna hear a lot of Melissa, which is really a good thing. We've been able to bring down the budget slightly. We have not made any substantive changes that impact any of the things in the first three... few slides. We still are really proud of the tier model of education, the coaching model, you've heard a lot about. We had a presentation at the last meeting. Will be expanded, and we're continuing to put more supports into classrooms to meet the needs of all learners. So again, all of these are going to stay. You don't see any changes going into this final adoption. These are consistent. We do have a few more retirements, but they're not... they're not major impacts to the budget, 'cause they will be replaced. There is a minor impact because of the salary differentials expected, but there's nothing significant because they are positions that will need to be replaced.
So the changes from the tentative budget, and this summarizes where those changes are coming from. The top half, this portion here is an increase in revenue. This portion above the line is increase in expenses. This is decreases in expenses. So we are anticipating another $27,000 in interest income, and that is due to the historical interest that we've been receiving from MMDT over the last 18 to 24 months. It's much higher than we were receiving prior... in prior years. So it warrants an adjustment, an increase upwards of revenue. Expenses that have increased, technology. We have revised renewal costs for our firewall services, and we just received a quote in, so I've adjusted that in the technology line item. In electricity, we received rates in... we go to bid for all of our utilities, and we received rates in that are a bit higher than what we're paying right now. Not a lot, but a little bit. So I'm anticipating about $5,000 more there. We had two additional retirements, so we're seeing a decrease... slight decrease in salaries of $9,000. Benefits, we're seeing a slight decrease due to the continuing movement of staff from active to retiree. If they can move to medex, it changes the amount that we would owe because the medex plan is much cheaper than a regular plan. We are seeing a decrease in supplies of $8,000, and that is mostly due to the industrial arts program at Wacona at the request of the content coordinator. And unemployment insurance, that still remains very, very low, so I felt comfortable reducing it, another $3,000. So this gives you a snapshot of where we ended last year. The adopted budget last year was $27,408. That's the budget we're working on this year. The tentative budget approved in February was at $27,648. This one is about $13,000 less, $27,634. So the difference is year-over-year, $225,975, less than a 1% increase, a .82% increase This is the same revenue slide that you've seen many times before. The only difference, as I said, is the interest income is now at $35,000. So I'm showing an increase, anticipated increase in that line, I don't know. This expenditure summary is the same with the changes on the summary slide. So we have a little bit of increase, a little bit of decrease, so the net is about $13,000 difference in the budget. And as I've said in the last few budget meetings, the $27 million operating budget is not the only revenue that we need to operate the budget. There's additional revenue that the district receives, and we categorize them as special revenue sources. And those are all of the grants, federal, state, private, school choice, revenue and assessment, whether we net more or net less. That has a factor in available funding. Circuit breaker, which is student services, reimbursement, and athletics and food services. Those special revenue accounts added to the operating budget is what it costs to run this district, so about $30 million. And this is broken out by where the revenue sources come from, town assessments, $16041, and that's a little bit lower because the revenue increased and the expenses went down. State aid is the same from the tentative, grants revolving is the same, and the local and miscellaneous is the E and D, and the transportation revolving, and other miscellaneous funds, like the interest income. So we apportion the operating assessments. We use a... excuse me. Five-year rolling average, and you can see the five years go back to October 1 of 2014, and the enrollment by town for each of those years. So the five-year total is on this line, the five-year average is on this line, and the five-year average percentage is here. This is the line, the enrollment that we use to calculate operating assessments for our towns. So moving those numbers forward, the five-year enrollment average, the enrollment percentage, that's the basis of how we begin to assess our town... the number of towns for operating cost. The required local contribution, this is a state figure, that is calculated by Massachusetts, and they use factors such as foundation enrollment, which is all the students in the town, not just central Berkshire students. So if your foundation enrollment goes up, most likely your required local contribution will go up, if you see an increase in students. So that starts the formula. Our budget is the other number, that's a big factor. And we take the percentages and multiply it by the total budget for transportation. So we have cost minus eight equals net budget. That net number is multiplied by the enrollment percentage. And we do the same for the other expenses aside from... And we do the same for the other expenses aside from transportation. So we do what we call a budget balance assessment, which is budget minus anticipated revenue or A, net budget, multiply minus the required local contribution multiplied by the percentages. That's a statutory way of calculating the assessments. Capital assessments are increasing just a little bit, and that is due to the feasibility study. We've been borrowing temporarily while that's going on. We anticipate to borrow more before that phase is over. We're still receiving invoices, so that's why you see an increase there of $63,601. We've added these slides. These are new. They weren't in the other presentations, but I think it's important to know what comprises those numbers and what are the projects that are out there. What are each town being assessed for those projects? And the first line is the project that it is, the second line is the last payment year. So Kittredge had windows redone, and I think part of the roof or the whole roof, this was before my time. So you could see the assessments there, and the last payment will be in 2022, meaning in 2023, there will not be an assessment for that project on that building. The same with the security upgrades.
We highlighted these, and Melissa proposed adding these, which I think made a lot of sense because there is a heightened attention to these capital expenses with the discussion around women high school at Wacona, so that you'd have a reference and have that information. Certainly, this one right here comes up a lot.
So we have the lock base and the feasibility, and the feasibility will be rolled into the construction project should the project move forward. So that's why you see 2022 there. If the project does not pass, we have five years to pay that off, including the two years of interest only, so we would have to recalculate that for the three years. But anticipating that it rolls into the full project, that would come off the books in 2022 as well, and onto a new project. And then Craneville has a couple of projects still out there, the air handler units, and those were, we did a series of small capital improvements in 2014, and these are the sidewalks, the security, and the air handlers. These are all coming off in 2022. And the Craneville roof, which was an MSBA, I believe accelerated repair project, will be completed, the last payment will be in 2023. Beckett-Washington's renovation is 2025, and you can see the numbers there, and how we calculate population and percentages. Population equals the percentage that the town is assessed. And then the Wacona project that was done, I think about maybe 2009, so about 20 years payment for this project. And that was doors, the PA system upgrade, I think the fire alarm panel upgrade, there was a lot of security type upgrades done then, and that'll be off the books in 2029, 2030 after 2020. So once this goes through, if it goes through, it will be up on the website tomorrow morning, so along with any other information that is warranted to be put up there, we'll get that up there for you, but that's it. I'm willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions before we give Bonnie the go-ahead?
All right.
All right, no, it's you, Bonnie. It's hard to do that from remotely. We're all done, tell you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Lori. Okay, so the fiscal year 20 budget final adoption, final fiscal year 2020 growth salaries and benefits adoption, whereas the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee on February 14, 2018 adopted a tentative growth salaries and active employee insurance benefit budget for the school year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $18,482,916. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopt a final growth salaries and active employee insurance benefit budget for the school year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $18,477,117 as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Thank you. Bonnie?
Final fiscal year 2020 retiree benefit adoption, whereas the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee on February 14, 2019 adopted the tentative retiree health insurance benefit budget for the school year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $2,016,255. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopt a final retiree health insurance benefit budget for the school year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $2,012,701 as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Thank you, motion carries. Okay, Bonnie. For this next one, we're going to need a vote.
Final fiscal year 2020 operating budget adoption, whereas the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee on February 14, 2019 adopted a tentative growth operating budget for the school year 2019 to 2020 in the amount of $27,648,273. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopt the final growth operating budget for the school year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $27,634, sorry, $27,634,846 as recommended by the finance subcommittee, and be it further resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopt a final anticipated revenue budget for fiscal 2020 in the amount of $27,634,846 as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? For this vote, we need to have a roll call, so Superintendent Casnut, please take roll.
Mr. DeFazio?
Aye.
Ms. DiTomaso?
Aye.
Mr. Emerson?
Aye.
Mr. Hagmeier?
Yes.
Mr. Locatell?
Aye.
Mrs. Lazzori?
Aye.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Dr. Craftery?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, there's one more, Bonnie.
Okay, no doubt. Final fiscal year 2020 capital budget adoption, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopt a final capital budget for the school year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $379,684 as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going to move on to policy. Mr. Hagmeier?
We will be meeting on Tuesday night at Central Office at 5:30 to review the strategic plan.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hagmeier? Okay, thank you. Personnel?
I don't believe we need an executive session. I will be trying to schedule a meeting of this subcommittee to deal with a contract issue, but that has not been set yet.
Okay. Any questions for personnel? Thank you. Safety and wellness?
Yes, we are also scheduled to meet on Tuesday, the 19th, at the Central Office for our initial organizational meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Good luck. Any questions for Mrs. Tucker? Thank you. Okay, Wacona building project.
So the biggest thing we just want to keep reporting is the vote coming up on the 6th. We did have a conference call with the MSBA. They were kind enough to conference call us in as opposed to us traveling down there because it was primarily a working meeting. It was myself, Ms. Velkowsky, Mr. Callahan, and Mr. Robb, and then on the phone with the MSBA was the project manager and DRA. We did go through all of the excluded costs that will not be eligible for reimbursement. They have them visually coded on the budget sheet, made sure that everybody understood those, was on the same page. We did get news that they are not going to be looking at the custom construction between now and the, and the vote that will go forward in April. That was shared with us. So we also talked through some of the requirements that have all been met, the educational plan that had to be submitted to the Department of Ed was approved, so we are right on target. We've done everything we need. They were very happy. Everything's been looked at by their legal department, and anything that needs to has been submitted timely, so we are right where we need to be with that. The next big date is April 6th for us, and really just making sure people have that. We will be going to the finance committee in Dalton on March 20th, which is next Wednesday night, and we are certainly willing and able to go anywhere else. There is a TV show I will send to you. It was well done, but it's a very close-up of Mr. Robb and I. But anything for the building project, even seeing myself on the big screen, I will do, that I will send out to you and that we are distributing, that was done by Dalton TV, and it was well done to do something similar to what we had seen done at Teconic. So that's really, I'll talk to you right now. Thank you. Any questions?
We mentioned the consortium course, we would not, we would use after the vote.
We don't believe that will be on the agenda at the MSBA at this point. They made that public, so.
They were.
They're set for us right now. That's what all of our costs are based on. So everything we give to the public is the accurate cost that we have right now. The cost will only go down from here.
And we were hoping that they would increase their cost per square foot.
Yeah.
Because they do vote on that sometimes annually, and they confirmed that it is not being taken up in the meeting in April, which is when our, our vote goes through for that vote.
But all our costs that we have shared are maximum at this point, so it's accurate information. There won't be any changes to that right now, which we have the April 6th vote.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Hey, do you have a quick question about absentee voting? This is going to take place, I've just had a lot of people asking, so.
Oh, I can answer that question. Yes, and I can only answer for Dalton, excuse me. But as of Thursday, I think you can vote there or get an absentee ballot.
This, Thursday, Thursday?
This, as of last Thursday, I'm sorry.
Last Thursday, okay.
It's available now.
Okay.
And as of about 4:45, 30, two people have voted.
Oh, wow.
So it's underway.
All right. So we go to the town offices, pick up our ballots and, or vote there.
That's correct, the town clerk's office.
Early voting. And that's the same with Beckett, they're available in Beckett now at the town hall as well. Okay.
I would just say that I went to one of the community forums on last Tuesday and Thursday, and they were excellent. I mean, all the detail was there, as much detail as anybody could absorb of the project, and I thought it was very, very well done, and pleased with the presentation in particular, and I think they were all well attended. I think the one in Dalton was well attended, from what I saw from the videos, the others seemed to be well attended as well.
Yes, Beckett was well attended, and everybody there was very positive, so it's, good. Any other comments? Thank you very much. And now it's the superintendent's report.
Sure, so I'll start with new current Mr. Bissell, who was too kind and has not given himself enough credit either. He has been integral in connecting us to our equity and diversity work, to Multicultural Bridge, which is just an incredible organization with a plethora of resources that really looks at systemic changes over time and building capacity and cultural competencies amongst students, staff, administration, community members. And Mr. Bissell has been a driving force between supporting our work and getting us real quality resources. There is somebody else I do, and I have mentioned before, he's the attention, need to mention by name, is Chief Jeff Coe. He has been so present and so active, he has been at multiple different forums that we've had, and been well beyond his traditional hours of duty, certainly, and just really making a public commitment that this is a community-wide issue on equity and diversity, and that the progress will be community-based. And of course, the dudes who have been driving this work for some time and are always bringing suggestions forward to us. So this is really a group effort that has become very community-based. I did highlight some different information that I thought was important for you to have. I also highlighted things that are happening. I will specifically talk a little bit about Friday here at Nessus because it was one of the most incredible things I've witnessed. We did have a response team from Multicultural Bridge come in and do some direct restorative training with our grade six students pretty quickly, with pretty short notice, in the way that they were able to mobilize not only experts and staff members from Multicultural Bridge, but also community members. So several community members, several people from the clergy, several people from local businesses, had several well-known community members, Mr. Bissell's parents, came out to just support the kids and to say, this is our issue too, and we are committed to the solution. And then we actually pushed into classrooms, I was assigned to a classroom because actually one of the teachers was just not able to be there that day, so I had the fortune of being in one of the classrooms. We assigned an administrator, a teacher, and two Multicultural Bridge staff members to classrooms to really do some lessons on race. And it was, I think, eye-opening for even some of the staff, some of the things we really talked about, what race is versus what nationality is, why race is connected to power, and as a result, there isn't reverse racism, even if there is dislike for a group of people who is not supported by some kind of power structure. So it was definitely, the kids were very serious and very invested in the work, and emotional about it because it is emotional work. So really, that was a highlight. There is a link to Taiyuan Jackson. I don't know how Gwen Linn was capable of getting that man here in such a short amount of time, but I do know it was incredible in the impact he had. Sometimes getting a 12-year-old to like sit up, even when it's that serious is a challenge, and they sat up when he spoke. So if you haven't listened to his talk, please do, he's pretty succinct, and every word he used was very powerful. So please do, I included some pictures as well. Tuesday night, we had a race forum here at Nessus for parents. Gwen Linn again was here facilitating it. Like I mentioned, a lot of parents were here, some community members who are no longer parents in the district that have had kids go through, just wanted to show their support, Chief Coe. And a lot of it, she does a really important job of building capacity while giving voice because we need to learn too to have these conversations well. So there is always a training component and a teaching component. Today, we had a full training again with a full administrative team, several staff members who were present on really building our cultural competency, so certainly want to keep you informed about that. The next meeting of the Equity and Diversity Steering Committee is next Thursday night here, for those of you who'd like to join. Robb is part of that group, which has been excellent. And actually, on that note, we do also have a book group starting. So there was a book in summer you may have read, Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria? I am still struggling to believe that this was like 20 years ago because I read it at that point, and it was 20 years ago, and there's now a 20th anniversary edition, really saying how little progress has been made and how some things have gone backwards. And so actually, which is so, so great, there is a staff member from Multicultural Bridge who does this work professional and really, really knows the equity and diversity work, is going to partner with one of our staff members, actually Sarah DeFazio, who some of you might know. One of our teachers at Beckett-Washington is agreeing to co-facilitate the book group and has some really excellent facilitation skills and ability to do that. So we're going to get the, we reached out, if you do participate, you'll get a copy of the book, and it's really a way to get the communities, for the community to be talking together about these issues. Just quickly, really quickly, a couple of things that I've learned and that I have, am trying to become more comfortable with because it can be overwhelming, is that what Gwen Linn has taught us is that if I called her in three years and say, guess what, we haven't had an issue in three years, we're not going to be in diversity. We haven't had an issue in three years with equity and diversity, she's gonna be really worried. That silence is not success. Lack of reporting is not success. That is absolutely not what is realistic or successful. We actually need to have capacity to respond. You know, and then the other thing she said, if we say, oh, this was great, we finished the work. Those are the districts most at risk. We're right, we're done, we finished the work, and we're moving on. Like, no. And that this work can become divisive and that that's the opposite of the goal. And we really need to make sure that it's the opposite of that, that it brings people together. So that is really kind of where we're at. You are going to have the benefit of the training on April 11th, just coming to school committee. So you'll have that experience firsthand. Any questions on any of that? It's kind of a lot, but we're trying to go at this from as many angles as we can with things that are gonna continue over time. You can check out that picture. But I did shadow a student for a day at the high school, actually. A student who's on our Equity and Diversity Steering Committee offered this to me. And I must have asked them probably 15 times when we got to use the bathroom or have food. Didn't seem to be bothering them at all. I also asked Mr. Messina, when do we get food? And these passing times are really quick. I think he caught me in the hall one time when I told Mr. Walsh I was quickly going to the bathroom and was taking a little longer because it's just so quick. It is so quick. So just the big three takeaways I had is it is quick and they have a high tolerance to it. They are moving all day long. The teachers there, they have so many embedded de-escalation and social, emotional learning strategies. I saw things like, I need you to get that open to me. Yeah, spend a morning. All right, I understand. Well, hopefully tomorrow isn't. Can move on. Like, those kinds of things that just de-escalated and really kind of comes to the scenario. And then the last thing is that I think at the upper levels, I was so interested that they commented so much more on the content of their classes versus necessarily the teachers. And content matters so much to them that it's so crucial that they have opportunities to take classes in areas of interest. Because I feel little kids is very much of who my teacher is, but there was a lot of, like, talking about the content. Oh, we're doing yoga now, and PE is so much better. Because the person I was with really likes that content. Or, oh, we're going to this. Some of it would be disagreeable. We're going to this class next, and we're studying the Renaissance. I'm not into the Renaissance. Like, oh, I am. So it's really important we look at those courses to make sure that there is an opportunity for interest base for our kids at the upper levels. And then the next meeting, we will do the mid-cycle review. I'm happy to be with any of you at any time. Pick up the phone, anything that works for you, I can accommodate, especially the new members. I included my goals. I will include a lot of evidence just around where we're at with them, how are we doing with them, what kind of progress have we made. And then I'm very open to suggestions as to what we need to do between now and the end of June. So those two dates, the date I mentioned with the training for the Equity and Diversity Steering Committee, that's Steering Committee, at school committee or on the end of the report, and then my mid-cycle. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. That's a lot, right? Does anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. And personnel? The superintendent, one more retirement. And I'm not aware of any old business or any new business. But if any remarks for the good of the committee?